Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council. Tonight is Monday, June 13th. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorney, city planners, city engineer, along with all council members are present, along with our assistant city administrator and our administrator? At this time, I will ask you all to join us for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address. We ask that you limit comments to five minutes or less, and anyone on Zoom is able to speak also. So do we have any comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Rachel Landon.
And I'm Charles Landon.
And we live on 1440 through northeast 89th Street at Atsigo. Been there for almost 45 years. So we've seen a lot of changes. But in the past few years, our street has gotten progressively worse. It's it's just full of potholes. And I did talk to the street management guy about that because I heard they were doing something with the street on O'Dea, and I said, what about our street? But he he said, well, theirs had more, but we went down that street and ours was way worse. Because three years ago, our neighbor across the street, his house burnt. And then all this heavy-duty equipment, they actually excavated the basement and everything. And this these heavy-duty trucks went back and forth, back and forth, down the street for months. And and then ever since then, the potholes are terrible. I know they put some tar in them in the summer. They hit and miss, kind of. But they don't, if they last that long. Our street is terrible. I'd welcome any one of you to come down our street because it's people are driving like this and then walking or, you know, riding a bike is just. We just wish the situation could be looked at and maybe addressed. I mean, I'll petition for a new road if I have to. I did that like 40 years ago. And we got the road. But it's been a long time, and we do need a new road.
What was the address?
14400 89th Street Northeast. It's where the the little farmhouse is on the corner.
I know for a fact if a police officer was following you down our street, he'd arrest you for drunken driving.
Has that gone that well?
Yeah, it's the white. There's a lot of them. It's dangerous.
It'd be a real good idea if you all went and took a ride down.
Yeah. Yeah, they're really bad.
So is it 89th Street that you're talking about?
Yeah, 89th.
Is it that section or is it other sections too?
Whole road or across specifically from you due to the heavy excavation and equipment?
I don't know if I think it it seemed to start when those trucks were going.
A lot of.
A lot of it.
They all loaded like big back holes off the trailers and.
Oh, it was a lot. It was a lot, but it's down further down the street too, but sometimes the trucks will go that way too. But it really has wrecked our street.
Ron, can you comment on that? We talked about PCI. Maybe you don't have it on your computer, but can we get what the rating is of what that street shows? Would you be able to?
Yeah, I mean, I can see if I can bring that up.
Okay.
We do what we do a pavement condition index, ECI. And we do that every year and determine which streets are coming up on getting an overlay or something of that nature. Yours was a road was completed in 1999. It was an overlay of of the existing pavement. And of course, that's 20 some years ago. And we expect a overlay to last 20 years or so. And we're getting to the end of the life of that road. And yeah, there's some larger vehicles that go over that towards the end of its life, we can exasperate it. I think there was somebody doing some work down near 90th Street. That might have been the traffic that you were seeing. I think it wasn't allowed work by the city. It was just completed. I that's the only I can think of where those larger vehicles would come from. We did have to shut down someone that lived.
No, it was from when our neighbor across the street, his house burnt, and then they took the whole thing out. They excavated the basement, then they were hauling heavy equipment.
Okay.
That's when it all started. Most of it started.
These move every year. Some can worse quicker than others. So but I could see if I can, I'd have to log on to my server to bring it up.
I was told by the guy at the head of the street thing, I remember his name, but he said.
Kevin.
Oh, you'll be two years before yours is gone.
Even consider.
We're doing all day. It'd be two years before we could even consider that. And I'm thinking.
Well, we went down all day and.
In two years, we might as well make it gravel.
Yeah. It is bad. Adam?
Mayor, it is ranging in the 51 to 60 on the PCI rating. So and it is included in the city's 10-year street renewal project listing, so it is on our radar. As Ron mentioned, sometimes those do fluctuate earlier than what we anticipate them to based on the road condition. So it is in our budget. It is on our radar. That is ECI.
When we first was gravel street, when we first moved in there and she started a petition, went on all the neighbors that had a black Well, we had to pay after blackout. And the city back then said, well, you pay for blackout and we'll maintain it. Well, isn't fixing the street part of maintaining it or?
Well. So, Ron?
Yeah, but our our definition of maintenance is the patching, the crack filling, seal coating, and micro-surfacing. So those are all items that we consider, you know, to to extend the life of the road as long as possible at a reasonable cost. And then once that life cycle is over, then we have to do something greater. And it might be an overlay. It might be a reconstruct. And those are assessable, but there is a new assessment policy out there that's not as on the owners as it used to be. It used to be 50% to the property owners and 50% to the city. It's now based on a different system. It's a lot to.
Yeah, because I read in the paper for that old edition, the street would pay seven or the city would pay 78%.
Correct.
Yeah.
It varies according to formula.
Yeah, because I gladly pay whatever time.
Mayor of Ron, could we sit there and I'd like to actually go out there and take a look at this road too, but could we take a look at kind of where our PCI is, where we have it set right now, the 51 to 60, go out and take a look at it and see kind of if that needs to change based on, you know, what's happened since last year to this year and.
That'd be great.
If I break a strut or something.
Yeah.
I'll go to say.
The patches they put in last year over the, you know, plowing and stuff over the winter. Now the holes are bigger because they tore some more out with it.
But they hit, yes. Yeah.
Mayor, I know O'Dea is on this year's. It isn't as bad as the rest of the streets in that neighborhood. And because it was put in later than the rest of the neighborhood, they were part of that 1999 overlay also. So these 1999 overlay projects, that was a very large city project. When back then, it probably did 50% of the of the streets within the city. So that was a very and then when these come due now, the city's redoing those. O'Dea Circle is just the cul-de-sac that happens to be right next to it. And it's very short, like 300 feet. So yeah, it's not going to show the same issues that the rest of that development, all the estates that's being done. It's being done because it's 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 right there. And if we don't do it now, it's going to cost us more to come back in the you know, when they have all the construction crews just right there adjacent to it. You got 300 feet, you leave that to bring someone back in and do that little bit of work and jump around has some cost to it.
Well, our neighbors will ask us, just because we're the lifers. They'll say, well, what, well, when do you think they're going to fix this street? You don't know. You know, because we've been here forever. So they we're supposed to fix it.
So the direction would be that we want staff to go out and reevaluate the rating of this road. So it is on the 10-year plan, as Adam said. I to tell you what year it is on that 10-year plan, it's based on the numbers, the PCI, which is 51 to 60. But we're saying, let's go out and look at that again to make sure that that's an adequate number for that. In the meantime, they should be patching that street though, if you're referring to these.
I know. I watch them patch and I'm out there and I'm getting after them because they're missing holes. And they probably don't like me out there.
That's okay. That's okay.
But in 10 years, we're going to be in our 80s, you know?
Well, it'll be within, so it's it's a 10-year plan. You're on it. You could be next year. I'm I'm not, I am just saying it's we lay out what the next 10 years of road projects are going to be. But we're directing Ron right now. He's the city engineer to go back out there with Kevin to look at that road. Um, if if you're okay with that, would you mind leaving your number with Ron or you can leave it over here with Audra and they can contact you then?
And did you want to talk about the ones on the end of this?
Oh, yeah, we got some.
Well.
I think the city is actually.
They've heard about these. Two.
He's got a city bus.
A trailer.
Motorhome.
A trailer. Extra car. He worked for Carl Sanderson for years, and when he would bring something home all the time, you know, but it's in the back. And then he had lots of extra vehicles, so they have to be on tar, right? He's pretty savvy. He's a nice guy. He's a likable guy, but he put tar down so that he tarred it. So he could park those cars there. So but if you look in the back, it's a lot.
He got a permit to build a shed out back. We had, he had to go around to all the neighbors and see if it was okay because it was too big of a shed. We okayed it. We thought this is good. He'll put all this stuff in there. Well, he filled that up.
He has a lot of stuff.
So Dan, do you have some comments on that?
Mayor, I believe it's it's the second house in on the south side of the street.
Yeah, a rambler.
Yeah, I believe we have that one in progress. So some of these that are more difficult than others take time.
Yeah, and also the one on the corner, the little farm. Elmer Dorisack used to live there. Place was meticulous. Now the son lives there and they would turn over in their graves if they would see the place. I guarantee it. They have an old motorhome there with bales of hay around it. Lots of lots of stuff. But it's a lot of stuff. It's kind of a nice or pretty much, but.
I believe Dan is taking the information.
We'll follow up on all the properties.
Are you saying you want more bales of hay for screening?
What did you say?
You saying you want more bales of hay for screening?
Probably. We don't mind the farm. Hey, they got boosters. We hear them crowing. We love it. Elmer used to have pigs, but he kept the place so neat.
All right. So Rachel and Charles, if you could get your number to Audra, then it sounds like you'll be in contact by Ron, the city engineer. Correct, Ron?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We could do that.
Thank you.
You want me to do it?
You're better for that.
I don't print that right.
All right, we are still under open forum. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
We have an old landline too.
Nothing wrong. I've got one too. It's good. There we go. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. My name is Michael Potter. I live at 11650 57th Street Northeast in the city of Albertville. And I'm running for county commissioner, District 3. I believe I am the best candidate for the job based on the fact that I have experience in the county level. I was also a former mayor and former council member. So I intimately know what it's like for a city council to have to deal with the county. Some of the experience in transportation I have is one of the sales tax option, which has helped us with County Route 39. And one of the big, it took a couple of years, but one of the big victories was changing how they did roads in this county. And this is a little metaphor. I used to do what I call the Pat, Jack, and Dick Show. Those three commissioners told where the things were going, got that changed. It's now based on average daily trips, age, and condition. And that's how that's how it makes it so. It's a busy road. It's like, what, County Road 939 went from the 10th busiest road to number one. So that's where the attention should focus. And the sales tax option allowed us to get the projects that were behind and still get our CASA money in other places there. Again, I believe I bring the most experience to the table, both at the county level and a city level. And I left my number there. Most of you have my number already. And so any questions, I'm open to answer.
Also, any questions for Mike? Yes.
How long were you county commissioner?
Eight years, two terms.
And you're wanting to go back?
Well, it, you know, it's it's you kind of you run real hard and then you think you'd need a little time. But a couple of years away, you think you miss it too much, you know? It's like, it's a lot of fun when you get in a transportation economic development were the two strong points. I also sat on the library board. You know, and the Economic Development Partnership, which was a lot of fun on that one too. It just there's some challenges when you have goals set, you see them happening. It's really good. I like the fact that a northeast quadrant here has got so much going on, so busy and so many challenges, and you've got to plan them out. You got to get there. If you want it today, you should have been there 20 years ago. I definitely had the saying that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And that's how it goes with transportation, whether you go to the county level, the state, or the federal level. You've got to be in their face all the time.
And when you were on the as a county commissioner, even though it wasn't our district, you came out here quite a bit. So I appreciated that.
Thank you. I also made a point that even though at that point I represented District 4, that didn't mean I just chucked everybody else. I paid attention to every other district. I've talked to Adam on many occasions. When things came up that they needed, in fact, with the pipeline up on by 101 there, I was out there for some of them meetings to try to see how you can cut through some of the red tape. Still a little challenge over there, but.
Well, it's still there.
Yeah.
Well, back to that, you know, that's getting because that's got that should get resolved. That's that needs to be upgraded and make that a lot available because that will it's a prime spot. Get something done.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you for coming and good luck.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, we are still in the open forum. Is there any other residents that wish to speak? All right, we will move on to item two to consider agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything they would like to add or delete at this time? And the motion for our agenda would be in order. I will make the motion to accept the agenda as written.
My second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item three is our consent agenda. The motion would be in order.
And a mayor. I'm to approve the consent agenda as written.
My second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our next item is a public hearing. It's item 4.1, the Barber Eastman Vacation. Audra, have all the legal notices been posted?
Yes, they have.
All right. And do we receive any comments?
I have not received any comments.
All right, I will turn this over to the for our city planner to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Corey Barber is applying for vacation of drainage utilities, and essentially the city reviews whether that existing easement continues to serve a function benefiting the public either in terms of stormwater management or placement of utilities now or in the future. The site is located at 14705 78th Street, which is east of O'Dean Avenue. It's just on the north or just to the north of the sewer district on the east side of the city. It's lot 13 block two in Valley. The lot is highlighted as somewhat of a triangular parcel. The easement in question is along the west plat line. Best as city staff can figure, the 20-foot easement was placed as this is a separate plat from the lots to the east. So it was probably viewed as a rear setback or rear guard at the time that plat was established. Zoning or excuse me, subdivision ordinance would typically now require only a 10-foot easement along that boundary. So we've got 10 feet of extra easement. The city engineer has reviewed that and it's not needed for area stormwater management. There are no utilities within that easement, so it's appropriate to vacate that back to the standard 10-foot drainage and utility easement along that property line that will allow the property owner to construct a detached accessory structure in the yard, basically to the west of the house. So after conducting the public hearing, city staff is recommending approval of the vacation of 10 feet of the existing drainage and utility easement by adoption of resolution 2022-55.
Okay. All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Again, this is for this property only and regarding their drainage and utility vacation. Is there any comments regarding this? I'll ask one more time if there's any comments. And for record, one more time, asking for any comments. I will close the public hearing. Comments and bring this back up to council for you to consider the resolution. If you have any questions, you can ask the planner at this time too. Tom?
And a mayor, the 10 to 20 that's listed on here. So from the property line to kind of where the drainage and utility event is, that's 20 feet. So it's 20 feet from a lot line to the outside of the crosshatched area.
Okay.
And they're so they're vacating the outside 10 feet of that, essentially vacating the crosshatch.
All right.
And that was, do you know when that was put in that 20 foot utility easement?
The plat was probably in the 70s.
Okay.
I mean, it would have been under Wright County jurisdiction. So this would have been proposed today under the city subdivision ordinance. It would be a 10-foot easement starting.
So my next question is, is there a reason why we need a 10-foot utility easement or drainage utilities there?
So just because it is backing up to those rear plot lines, the way that area probably sits up with 10 feet on the other side, it's appropriate to have 10 feet on the side as well. That's also the same as the setback required for the proposed accessory building. So it's not causing any additional difficulty in locating that structure.
Tom?
And a mayor, and all we need to do is consider the resolution before us, 2022-55.
Correct.
And a mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-55 approving a vacation of a portion of existing drainage and utility easement dedicated within block 13, block two, Hidden Valley.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Brittany. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item 5.1, this is stormwater pollution prevention program. We'll turn this over to our city engineer, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, cities required to hold a public meeting to provide residents any opportunities to have comments or questions for the council. And I was going to go through with what the stormwater utility fee is that the city has. Most of you that are water and sewer probably see it when you get your billings. There's a portion on there that's called stormwater utility fee. And what that entails pays for. So we've got put together a quick slideshow here. We have to check every single outfall that goes to public waters every year. So all those green stars on this are an outfall either to the Mississippi River or Atsigo Creek, which is considered a DNR waterway. Also, the Crow River to the south. So I have to check to make sure that all those don't have any erosion issues and everything looks fine. That's, like I said, annually. Then on the next slides, we have the skimmer structures. So all the west skimmers, east skimmers, you can see we've divided into four quadrants. On the east, we got two quadrants. On the west, we have two quadrants. And we do those. Every year, we take 25% of the city and go through and review those within that quadrant to see if there's any issues with those skimmer structures or the structures that are leaving the storm ponds. And then on the next slide, we have the storm ponds themselves. I don't have one for the west side, but the east side here, give you an idea what it looks like. We have to look at, again, 20% of those ponds. And we look at how if there's issues around the edges, if they're filling in too much on the bottom that needs to be cleaned out, or we got erosion, of course, occurring on the banks. So those are the items. And then I can show you a form here that the city well, this one, we had some concerns with development and the MPCA had some discussions with the city. And what we did is we're handing out these forms, which shows that every builder, because it is part of a subdivision, it's greater than 10 acres or greater than one acre actually, has to meet all the the stormwater pollution prevention program. So this goes over this in pretty good detail. This is handed to builders as they come to the city. And therefore, we've really ramped up. City staff as a whole has really ramped up our efforts to make sure that all of our meeting are the criteria that's set forth by the MPCA. And I think if you drive around town, you'd see that it's fairly clean. We don't have the dirt coming out onto the street. If we have soap fence that's down, or usually it's like concrete trucks that drive over when they were rafter deliveries. They drive over it to get into the site, but then we are after the builders to replace the damaged soap fence and hopefully use the stabilized exit pad, which you would call a rock entrance, to get to the site and leave the site. And then lastly, I've got examples of, so we have send our guys out every year, like I said, to look at 25%. And they have a notepad with them and they fill out all these items. It's basically a yes, no, and they take pictures of the issues. These get turned over to Kevin and his crews, and then they can go out when they have a chance to take care of like this one. I think there's some trees that are blocking the the exit to that pond and to get in there and make those repairs. It says both flared end sections are full of pre needs repaired. Culvert needs to be cleaned out. So it gives some specifics to what the Public Works Department needs to do, and that's also paid by the stormwater utility. There's another one on here, just to give you a second look. And some of these are done fairly late in the year, but again, we got a tree growing through the joint. So we have to get that removed or else, of course, this concrete structure is not going to stick around for very long. They're supposed to last 50 to 100 years. So we want to keep up on issues that come up. So basically, that's in a short period what that stormwater utility fee goes through every year and so I guess if constituents ask you why they're paying for it, now you have a good idea.
Ron, just for vacation, is it 25% of each quadrant you look at or 25% of the?
Well, each quadrant is 25%. So we're looking at that whole area.
Yes.
Once a year, we move on to the next one.
Okay. So every four years, you're back.
Every four years, we've done the city this entire. Every four years, we've uh, done the city, its entirety, and that's a requirement.
Okay. I have gotten that question and I've tracked them to call you, so. Very informative, and I don't know, I looked to Sabrina, is there a way for you to put those maps that they could, because we get it obviously in our bill. But just a, a link that they could go in and. See your, what they're paying for and understand it, it's about, you know, these specific ponds and about twenty-five, I mean. Exactly what you said is.
And it's, your, your quadrant, you sold that last year. And it's worked, it's done every year, so it's ongoing.
Yes.
You know, the city's purchased maps that they can get back to uh, these storm ponds without damaging. The, this grass to get back to, through the easements, and uh, so, all those things cost money. Costs money to have people go out there, do this work, it costs money to have the city go out there and clean this. But we think we got a very good system that, uh, you know, with the notepads, it makes it pretty quick, it's all. You know, GIS connected, so when they're walking, they can see that they're walking towards the Florida section. To see, so it really helps us find these that might be buried deep in the grass or in some trade areas.
I just think it's very valuable for, you know, we're, we're getting the presentation here, um, but just as a resident, if they. You want it to be transparent of what they're paying for, since it is a fee. If you can link some of that on our website, we know that our website gets used a lot, so uh, maybe a helpful tool for residents. Um, yes.
On those, when you do, I know there's, I have one off of Mason Avenue where I live, and in the back, they have. That type of drainage back and forth, but if you walk over, there are some sinkholes, I think, or at least some dirt voids that probably could be addressed. And you said, could I talk, could I send that into you, there's a new neighbor now, which used to be the old um. Uh, like a sewage pump facility, where now it's a new houses, and now that new owner owns that. Talk to you, talk to Kevin, just bring it up.
Either Kevin or I, we can get that addressed, I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily be that quadrant, if there's an issue.
Just bring it up.
Look at those, as they come up too, it's just that we're required to do that, uh, hit the city. Entire city, once every four years, items can come up in between that, they're a big enough issue that we need to address immediately.
Okay.
But usually, if you're having kind of the ground around the void, it's because normally, like when you have a tree. The root grows in through one of those rings or whatever.
Right.
Breaks it up, you get the, the silk that flows into storm.
Yep.
And then it just cuts.
There's, there's a joint or something's uh, moved in, has caused that. That's one of the reasons why we do not allow fences over our storm sewers, just because they, they could penetrate. The uh, or at least crack the, the pipe and cause those sinkholes too, so. A lot of people, of course, want to put it at the property line, even if they have a storm sewer easement.
All right, um, we are required to take public comment on this, since this is our yearly meeting. So I will open it up to any public comments from the audience or anyone online. Is there any comments regarding our stormwater pollution prevention program? All right. We have received no comments, is there any comments from the council? That you may have that were not addressed?
Madam Mayor, I'm just curious, what is the um, fee, what do we charge, do the city charge for this storm?
I'll just need a minute to find out.
Just, just curious, cause I'm.
Mayor, it, it's different for every property, depending on the s- type of property, so we go by zoning.
Sure.
So R four, R five, R six might be one thing, industrial might be another. Because of how much stormwater they actually produce.
In, Mayor, in relation to lot area and allowed impervious surface, so. Obviously, in the acreage lots, the stormwater impact of a single lot isn't the same as in the sewer district, when the lot is a third the size.
So for the R five district, probably the most common is fourteen dollars and sixty-six cents per year.
Thank you.
And that's built twice, or?
That's the total per year.
Total, okay.
It's built out into installments.
Okay, that's what I was saying, I was like, we get it twice on it.
Correct.
Twice a year. All right, was there any other comments? All right, no action needed on that, thank you, Ron. And if you can work with Sabrina to get that information. So it'll be like, how many hits on our website, people looking at stormwater? Yeah, right? All right, next is city council reports and updates, does anyone have anything? All right, we will move on to item seven, staff reports and updates. I will start with Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, only update I have is what we talked about the workshop, so the Parks and Rec director position will be posting soon. Uh, and so. Spread the news, I guess, on it, um, and we'll anticipate to have someone hopefully in October, so, thank you.
All right. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just to reiterate what was in the weekly update last week, but the twenty-one. Uh, population estimates were released by the state demographer, uh, that number is twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine, so. Uh, that is as of April first last year, so uh, some good growth again after the census numbers. Uh, a reminder to the council, if you're interested in attending next Tuesday at nine-thirty in the morning. Uh, Dakota Supply Group is holding their groundbreaking ceremony after construction site, so if you are able to attend, just let me know and I'll. Put you in contact with their PR people, so. Uh, and then lastly, um, the Corridor Coalition will be um, going out to DC in July. And I will be joining them on the twelfth and thirteenth. We're going to support what we're calling the gap project between Albertville, Atsego, Monticello. Uh, MinDOT did submit a grant application for that project in the amount of sixty million dollars, so. I will be going out there to meet with um, the US Department of Transportation, the two senate offices, and House of Representatives, so. That's all I have.
Adra.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no updates.
All right. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, no updates.
Dan?
Mayor, uh, next planning commission meeting is June twentieth. Uh, we've got public hearings for Anna's Acres, which was the former Meadows of, or excuse me. Fields of River Point Development, Lennar backed out, and the property owners moving the plans forward as they have ownership of them. While trying to market to other builders to take over the subdivision. Um, the due north car wash concept plan for the northeast corner of Parish Avenue, County Road forty-two and eighty-fifth Street. Um, will be on the agenda, as well as the PUD development stage plan, preliminary plat and final plat for Mississippi landing. Pending some further discussions with city staff uh, this week, June twenty-first, I'm attending the Park and Rec Commission.
Good job.
The conference of plan, um, and then we also wanted to request the council to call a special meeting for Monday, June twenty at six o'clock PM. To consider the final plat and development contract for Prairie Point. Developer is working diligently to get uh, their final documents in order, to have that ready to go. I believe all the construction plans and everything are in order at this point, um, they have a contractor on site that. Because of the depths of the sewer needed to get through, uh, it's caused some delays, and it makes it a priority for them to get this move forward. From the city's standpoint, city needs to have the street connected between Avia Street and eighty-third street by the time. School starts, as that's how buses are going to be accessing Prairie Elementary, so uh, it's important to see this project move forward.
Tom?
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm fine with you guys going ahead with it, but I was going to ask you uh, tonight if you could uh, fill in for me on June twentieth. I have a fundraising fact.
Sure.
I will be attending.
I can fill in for you, and um, as long as you're fine with listening at me. And I believe Tina, you were available, Brittany and Jeff, you were.
Up in the air.
Up in the air also, so we would have a forum with us three present. Then I will make a motion to call our meeting for June twentieth at six PM, as a special council meeting. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Brittany.
Dan, did you wanna uh, text reminder for the twenty-first? Meeting, are you good?
No, I'm good, I've got it in all my calendars, and I'm gonna write it on my hand.
Good idea.
I mean, I was more than happy.
We're still on the twenty. Was there any discussion on the twentieth meeting? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. That item was passed, Brittany.
If you want.
Twenty-first.
Know it, it could stick it on the dashboard.
There's a, there's a little joke with this, uh, Brittany and I were at the last Park and Rec meeting, Dan was supposed to be there. For the comprehensive plan update, and we both messaged him, cause it's not like him to not be here, and.
First time in twenty-eight or twenty.
His message, his message back to me was, I thought it was Wednesday, I said in two thousand four, it was on Wednesday. All right, um, and then Adra, you haven't noted that I'll be covering for Tom the twentieth and after. You're welcome. Ron?
No comments.
All right, Jason?
I don't have anything super specific tonight, um, just I'll, the only thing that we're kind of really working on, um. I have every deputy kind of working on, uh, with new speed limit changes in town, I had each deputy basically assigned themselves. Not only a particular uh, new speed zone, um, on kind of all these different roads, but then. Take it, take an opportunity to go evaluate what the. Uh, I guess adherence rate is to all these new different speed zones, now uh, like an OD, and there are some of these larger roads. And then go pick a residential neighborhood as well, that would, that you, we would assume that would be a violation, so. Um, especially when it comes to the residential, I've heard like, it's been great so far. Um, to the point where some of the guys are assigning themselves to different neighborhoods, and are finding zero violations, to the point of. They're not even making traffic stops, because nobody is violating the speed limit, to the point of even. Stopping and addressing, so that's been really good so far, um, the guys are going around and just making sure. Obviously, with that many signs that had to be replaced, that, you know, there's a handful that they're just like, oh, does this need to be swiped out? But they've been really good with getting ahold of Kevin, and Kevin's going out and making sure everything's up, it's not really quick on all the signage, so. Um, it's been a ton of traffic complaints here lately, I know I bring that up every once in a while when I come up here, but we've had a ton of traffic complaints, a lot of different things that are. Um, you know, making it to the county and MinDOT, all those sort of things, we're just trying to, a lot of different entities involved with a lot of requests and. Uh, trying to get out there and make some presence, so, like I said, nothing real specific, it's just kind of a citywide, a lot of traffic stuff, and I know I bring that up with public safety a lot. That we get a lot of those. Request to put squad cars next to certain roads, but working on them and taking them kind of one by one.
Yes, and thank you for always being receptive when we're sending messages, so, you know, last week, we were, it was a big large message, and we're on it with the. Thirty-nine, the detour, people having to come south on one-on-one to use thirty-nine to go north and.
Yeah, and that's kind of one of those ones where, uh, that's a perfect storm there, is because we. Will hear the complaint, because it may go to Sherbrooke, it may go to State, or it may go to us. And so maybe by the time we even get the information, it's long gone, and it's maybe a car here or there, so. Um, I asked my guys, anybody actually seen this particular uh, complaint, and they're like, no, we've never even had an opportunity to get there in time to see. How they're going the wrong way, or how, you know, so it's been kind of a toss-up on what's going on with that, so. Sometimes that's how it goes.
Thank you. Um, all right, does anyone else have anything for staff? Or Jason?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. All right, um, if no one else, anything else?
I got one thing.
Yes.
Mayor, like to uh, give a shout-out to uh, our acting mayor, doing a fine job last time, and I'm glad to see. Mayor Pro Tem, also, I'm glad to see you back and feeling better.
Thank you, I'm happy to be back, sitting up a little straighter than last time, but.
No, I have the back issues.
Yeah, I got a surgeon.
Need to go there.
But uh, thank you for filling in, and I did hear you missed uh, open forum, but.
No, I didn't, no, he made it his own way.
He made it your own way, it was at the end of the meeting versus the start of the meeting, so hopefully no one had to sit in the audience and wait. And I was going to Zoom, but our internet was down that evening, so. That was, was interesting, so, all right, well, again, thank you, and nice to be back. Is there, there's nothing else, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the meeting has ended, thank you all for attending in person and via Zoom.